I did one. Item J2.
Hi, good afternoon. Okay, item J2 is requesting permission to advertise a request for proposal for external financial auditing services and appoint a representative of the Board of County Commissioners as a member of the Audit Selection Committee. And that's in accordance with Florida statute and our policy regarding selection procedures. The Audit Selection Committee is comprised of the sheriff, property appraiser, tax collector, supervisor of elections, and clerk or their representatives, and then a member of the board. So tonight, I need to have some type of appointment and authorization to solicit for proposals for financial auditing services. The current contract ends at the completion of this year's financial audit.
Move to approve.
Okay, we need an appointment. Do you guys have -- we can make the appointment part of it. Does anybody want to volunteer to be on that selection committee?
[laughter]
Yeah, one of us.
I'll do it.
Okay, yeah, perfect person. She's an accountant, so, all right. Can you modify the motion to include Rita as the appointment?
So modified.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Loeb to appoint Rita Pritchett to the committee and to go to the RFP process. Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and this item does come back to the board, so that committee will bring back their recommendations with their top three, and then at that time, we'll talk about the options that the board has.
Okay. Okay, since both of these next items are Commissioner Tobias', would you have a problem if we did item five before four?
You're the chair.
I mean, I've had several requests by different people, different people that were here to speak, different people that were here for their items, to move them, and I sort of like put a lockdown and says, "I'm not moving anybody," only because, unless it was directly related, but because there were so many requests. If it's one request, it's easily done. If it's two, three, four, then it's favoritism, so I didn't want to get into that. But since these are both of your items, and you're okay with it, we're going to move item number five ahead. So Commissioner Tobias, I'll give you the mic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the board approved the aquarium project in September, there have been multiple changes. We now have a new member on the board, as well as new membership on the TDC. While I do not doubt that the aquarium would make a wonderful attraction, this is a question of priorities. While this is TDT funding, the county does have options. And this, I had phrased as a question for our county attorney. These are the options, but better coming out of the attorney's, her opinion than me. But assuming a collection of more than $10 million in TDT revenue, if we were to amend county ordinance to allocate funding for construction, repair, maintenance, or operation of lagoon infrastructure projects designed to prevent catastrophic pollution of the lagoon, and follow the requirements set forth in Florida statute, Chapter 125, Section 0104, Section 5A6, such as funding 30% of the project from sources other than TDT, approving the project by a supermajority vote, performing an independent professional analysis demonstrating the positive impacts of infrastructure projects on tourist-related businesses in the county, and allocating 40% of funding to advertising and marketing, a staff analysis would be required. The question would be, would we be able to use these funds on infrastructure projects related to the lagoon upon a recommendation from the TDC?
Yes.
The effect of this resolution would be that the TDC would be able to take a fresh look at whether this is really the best use of the money to help heal our lagoon. So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution as proposed, Madam Chair.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Okay, motion fails for lack of second. And the reason why I wanted to do this -- [applause] The reason why I didn't bring it to the public first was in case that were to happen, and since we don't discuss how we're going to vote, no one knew how it was going to go, and I didn't want to waste anybody else's time, given that most of you have been here for a very long time, as it is. Doesn't mean that you cannot speak during public comment. I'd be more than happy to hold your card for that time, but since this item is no longer an item, unless, you know, a commissioner decides to make a different motion to do something else, is one thing, but this item in itself is dead. So Commissioner Loeb?
I just want to say, in terms of this item, I just want to, I think in all fairness, let you know what my concerns were about it. I appreciate in reading the resolution that there is a comment indicating, let's see, I'm sorry, in the recitals, whereas it's been determined by the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners that revenue from the Save Our Lagoon tax, yada, yada, should not act to reduce other allocations made to protect the Indian River lagoon. I agree with that 100%, but part of the issue that I had in terms of being able to support this was that I couldn't connect that to the dot of actually seeing the improvement in the lagoon. So part of it, and this isn't the entirety of my concern, is it's skipping a step between what the recital is suggesting and what we're doing. And my biggest individual concern, again, not exclusive of all my other concerns, is if we were to de-allocate this funding, we take back the $10 million, and I'll pose this as a question to Attorney Bentley, could in theory, whether or not this is likely to happen, could in theory, this money then be allocated for something like $10 million worth of astroturf?
There would be a lot of steps in between.
But that's something that theoretically could happen. If this resolution were to have been approved, assuming that conditions precedent are met, is that not something that we could eventually arrive at in terms of a use for these funds?
I think it would have to go through the Tourist Development Council and a contracting procedure and a lot of other steps, but possibly?
Possibly. That's my concern, in terms of a biggest single concern. The other concern is, I don't believe that I have enough information, and I've certainly made efforts. I see Keith Winston sitting back there. We've spoken. I'm sure we're going to continue to speak in terms of getting the financials. I can tell you, as someone that has a huge saltwater reef fish tank and is someone that goes to cities sometimes because they have aquariums, is someone that considers paying more than I probably ought to to dive with whale sharks or various other things, I think it's a cool idea. I love the fact that it would be in District 2. I love the fact that it's near my office if it's something that pans out, but I'm not sold yet in the sense that I have not yet seen enough in the way of financials to justify to me that this is something that's going to operate without us having to bail it out down the road. I'm not saying it won't, but I don't like doing things impulsively, and with respect to this, I think I need to give the folks that are pushing the aquarium more of a chance, and I've certainly already started down that road, to make the arguments to me in terms of why it's something that's beneficial from a return on investment standpoint, not from a coolness standpoint or a tourist detractor standpoint. I think it's got both of those, almost certainly, if it's anything like what we've spoken about. But I just, I can't simply shoot this down without at least giving you some reasons behind why I'm not in favor of supporting the resolution at this stage. It's not to say that down the road, if the aquarium doesn't make the case, or the folks promoting the aquarium don't make the case, that my mind is made up to support it irrespective of whatever data is discovered, but I think there's still a process of doing due diligence that I'm in the middle of, and I can't at this juncture just skip ahead to the end conclusion, so I'll leave it at that.
And I don't see anyone have their lights on, but my concern with this resolution wasn't, is because it's not an either/or item. It's not a, "We don't care about the lagoon, so we don't want to fund other projects." I think we have to be careful, and just like they don't want us sweeping, or I say "they," meaning people that complain about it, like residents or appear on commission about us sweeping for infrastructure, no one wants us to sweep the TDC fund just for the lagoon, only because we're collecting $4 million a month, and we can't even agree on how to spend it. So I'm going to suggest that we spend another $10 million when that project not only in perpetuity will benefit the lagoon, not just education-wise and all the feel-good stuff, which is good, it's all good stuff. It's going to teach not just people in our community how, you know, our lagoon works and stuff like that, but we're going to actually get money back from it, from admission that's going to go toward lagoon projects. And there's that $50 million investment, so I highly doubt that investors in such a major project, assuming that they can even get the $50 million, because if they don't get the $50 million, that $10 million trigger doesn't even occur. So there's a lot of, you know, benchmarks that need to be hit first. You know, I was torn on the issue, but, you know, one could argue easily that we've got three parks that have low, you know, people coming, low attendance. Should we shut those down completely and just put that money toward the lagoon, the money for those, you know, employees that service the park? I mean, we could say that about a lot of things. The lagoon is always going to be a priority, but it doesn't mean that nothing else is important. And I think we need to delineate what TDC funding's for, which you've already committed some of those monies to the lagoon, and what our lagoon fund is for, so. [applause] I really appreciate everybody coming out. I do. Thank you so much. Well, the item's dead. I mean, they could speak during -- If anybody wants to speak during public comment, you're more than welcome. That'll be in just a little bit. I'll save your card if you want, so you don't have to fill it out again. Just raise your hand when public comment comes up. Item J4? Oh, all right. You ready for six? Okay, we're going to go to item J6, because Commissioner Tobias is not prepared. I didn't mean it to sound like that.
I'm ready whenever you want.
So he can get prepared. I'm sorry.
Are you going to do six, or?
Do six.
Okay. So in short, some folks may recall that we had a constituent of mine, Pam LaSalle, that came before the commission, asking that we term-limit essentially all of the advisory boards. I had extended the offer to meet with her and Attorney Bentley, who was kind enough to go ahead and meet with us. During that meeting, I had some discussions that basically culminated in a list being created of particular advisory committees that we felt, or at least the overall consensus was, wouldn't suffer in terms of having vacancies if we were to impose term limits on them. There's some advisory committees that doubtlessly would be hard to fill, and I'm not looking to term-limit those, but the advisory committees that are easy to fill, that I have people clawing each other's eyes out to get positions on, I think it's appropriate to look at instituting term limits. Now, there's something more of perhaps an art than a science in terms of determining what an appropriate term limit would be. I know that when I moved to do this with respect to TDC, I based it obviously on the duration of a term of service to TDC. Now, with respect to P&amp;Z, their terms of appointment are substantially lower, they're one-year terms of appointment. So what I've proposed with respect to this agenda item is limiting an individual to three consecutive terms of service as an active member of P&amp;Z. And essentially, what it would allow to do, or what it would, pardon me, what it would allow to have happen would be if someone wants, in theory, assuming they get the appointment, to serve three years on P&amp;Z and then rotate the fourth year to serve as an alternate, they could do that essentially in perpetuity. So it's something of a softened term limit, where really what I'm trying to accomplish with this is to keep in commissioners' minds the idea that it's worth looking to see whether or not our selections are really allowing enough new blood into the actual advisory committee or not. I'm not trying to do this to get rid of any particular individual. You saw, I did the same thing with TDC. I'll be doing the same thing with other advisory committees. I'm happy to discuss with respect to my proposal that a three consecutive term limit is appropriate. I'm happy to discuss changing that up or down if someone feels that that's inappropriate for one reason or another, but I think this is something where if we were to go ahead and pass this, we would have zero issues by way of having to fill this. If anyone has an issue finding someone, I would be very, very, very surprised. This is one of those sort of hot-button boards that historically, I've never even heard a rumor of someone having had difficulty finding folks willing to serve in this capacity. So I know that one of the concerns that was raised by my colleague, Commissioner Pritchett, with respect to TDC was there was a particular individual that was great on that board. There are a couple particular individuals that are solid on this board as well, that I would hate to see go, including at least one in my own district, but I think that the spirit of imposing term limits is more important than retaining one particular individual as an active member of P&amp;Z. When we have the option to rotate them as an alternate, they can still provide their input, they simply can't vote as an alternate. And I'll, in the interest of brevity, just leave it at that.
Okay. Commissioner Tobias? I have two cards, but I think one person's left, and it's up to you if you want to speak before, or?
I'll come this week or after.
Okay, Ronald Barcher?
Thank you. My name's Ron Barcher. I'm located at 3431 Grantline Road in Memes. I would request that you not establish term limits. I believe this would be a bad idea for several reasons. First, if these term limits are imposed, then you lose the expertise that this board has developed. Learning the planning and zoning code takes considerable time. It's not something that you pick up and walk in, and you're suddenly an expert on it. It takes not just months, but years to actually become familiar with the code. Second, if the board members are replaced every three years, then county staff is going to have a significant increase in their workload because they're going to have to retrain all of these constantly new members. That's not a good thing to do. Third, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. The board members have a, by having a continuing, if they're replaced every three years, you lose the corporate memory that the board has. That's another thing that, and that corporate memory is important. That's the reason why you're not all replaced at the same time. You need that for a smooth and consistent operation. Fourth, I'm a president of two different volunteer organizations. I know that recruiting new, hard-working individuals is difficult. I'm surprised to hear that you have people clawing at it in order to get in. I just can't believe that that's, you must have some special group of people there. And the other thing, you know, talking about vacancies, currently, according to the website anyway, there's three vacancies on that board. So please, don't put term limits on that board. Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Ellen?
Sure.
Just a question for you. If you're familiar with the board, do you know how long the longest-serving individual has been on that board?
No, I don't. I suspect it's Henry. He's the chairman, has been chairman as long as I have been attending those meetings.
And how long's that been?
Let's see, I started back in 2006 or thereabouts.
So 13-plus years?
Yeah. I don't, like I said, I don't know, but, and I've seen other people come and go. I just think he's probably it.
I appreciate it.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to state that I do fully support term limits. I just had some questions about what was presented here, and because of sunshine, obviously, I have to wait till this forum to ask those. So what's the logic behind making this board term limit different than what we just established with the TDC, that being eight years?
It's based on essentially the fact that this is a different type of board, and namely, the biggest single item is the term lengths are different. I don't have a problem, as I mentioned, being flexible with respect to the duration of the term limit, whether it's up or down on the number, but I'm aware of at least one individual that's been on that board for 14 terms. Unless my information's incorrect, that's concerning. Even if the individual is skilled, and I don't doubt that the individual is skilled in what he's doing, it causes me some consternation. As to vacancies, were sunshine not to apply, and actually, let me pose the question to Attorney Bentley, is there any issue where someone to ask me if I had suggestions for who to fill that board with? Is there any sunshine issue, presuming it's not something that comes up before the board with my giving them names of folks that have expressed interest to me in serving in that capacity?
I think you could distribute a list of names who've inquired about the positions in your office, yes.
I mean, I can tell you without question, and these aren't, you know, folks that we're plucking from the bus stops around, that may not have any particular expertise or knowledge in this area. Most of the folks that have approached me, I don't want to say all of them, because I'm not certain about that, but most of the folks that have approached me, if not all, either are builders or developers, or have some background with respect to this particular industry. If I weren't confident that we could easily fill these positions, I would never propose that. This was one of a handful of advisory boards that were selected based upon the thought that they would be easy to fill and that we wouldn't be left with vacancies as a result of trying to do a good thing. So again, I'm flexible with respect to the term limit, and if you have a proposal other than three years with the off-year permitting someone to retain as an alternate, or to remain on as an alternate, I'm happy to entertain that, but this wouldn't kick anyone off of P&amp;Z, including the individual who's been on there for 14 consecutive terms. This would simply require that that individual rotate to an alternate position. And I do want to point out real quickly as well, that I, the point is well-taken with respect to our terms being staggered, where we have three and two, but we're, even with the P&amp;Z as it's composed now, we don't have everyone flushed out all at the same time. There is a degree of staggering, as I've seen in the board. It's not perfect staggering, as we have here, or at least as close to it, but there is some staggering. So I don't think this is going to be a mass exodus of individuals, where the staff is going to have to be retraining folks perpetually ad infinitum.
Wow. Okay.
Does that answer it?
Yeah, I don't think so, but we'll move on to the next question in fear of a response. Why?
Come on, no.
I just asked, why three? Why not five? Why not two? Why not eight? It sounds like there was no reason behind three.
I don't want to say there was no reason. Again, it was based on these being year-long terms.
Maybe that's where we need to start. I don't mean to chime in, but maybe that's where we need to look at, possibly.
Okay, second of all, the board tasked the county manager to give us a, I guess, a rubric for all the boards that were out there, how the membership is comprised, whether or not they can be sunset, what are the term limits, what are the costs. I think that the county manager's been working pretty diligently on that, and that's something we'll probably have back in a month or two. Do you think it would be a better idea to wait, given that we've gone that far, to wait that month or two, where we can sit down and instead of randomly choosing numbers, being three years, or five years, or whatever that number is, and have some level of consistency between the boards? Because I, for many of, you know, I would have a problem with three years, but I wouldn't necessarily, we've set a precedent of eight years. I would not have a problem with doing that, but do you think it's better to wait till we can look at all of the boards together and handle them for a level of consistency, or is there a necessity with doing it tonight?
There's no necessity. If you want to punt this and table it a little bit, I have no problem with that. If that makes you happy, I'm happy to do that. There's no urgency.
I'm just looking for consistency, so I don't have to go, when we go through these boards, we have to look up, how many members on the board, what is the term, how long do they have? If we had some level of consistency, saying eight years for all of them, as we set the precedent, it probably would be a lot easier to fill these. I think we'd hear a little less consternation with the turnover, because P&amp;Z is very difficult. So again, if forced into it, I'll be voting for term limits, but I'd rather see some consistency.
Can we maybe ask Mr. Avante if he has an opinion one way or the other, because I just don't know whether he does?
Well, I can tell you that we committed to having the report back to board members by the end of March, and staff is diligently working on that. And then we have a workshop set already. The board approved in May to go over advisory boards and term limits. So that's already set.
Yeah, I'm happy to handle it any way you want. I mean, if you want me to table it, that's fine. If you want me to modify it to eight years with one year off, allowing four, obviously, people to serve as alternates in the year off, I'm fine with that, however you want me to do it.
Your agenda item, though. I was just making a suggestion, so if you want to table it, more than welcome to. If you want to vote now, you're also welcome to make a motion.
I don't particularly want to table it. If folks are happy with an eight-year term, and I just, I'd like to get a little guidance from the rest of my colleagues up here, if that's something they're comfortable with, or if they'd really prefer that this be tabled, because I'm not going to make an issue of getting this done here and now if there's no need, and I've not seen a pressing need to do this instantaneously.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, traditionally in favor of term limits, but in this particular board, I don't think that's a good idea. We have, in fact, three vacancies on this board, so we don't have people standing in line waiting to get on the board.
Do we know whose districts those vacancies are in?
I don't know.
Because I can tell you, they're not in my district. I'm just curious if someone knows whether or not they even have the vacancies, because if that's the case, and they simply don't know, I don't think that's a problem that term limits, or the absence of term limits is going to modify.
And further, trying to teach new volunteers about the comprehensive plan, the zoning capabilities, the future land use, conditional permits, non-conformance issues and regulations, Burt-Harris Act, legal options, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's a bit overwhelming for the average person. So I think this is a particular board that requires experience and knowledge, and the institutional knowledge that the folks have that are on that board, I think is extremely important, and it would be extremely difficult to replace, just because somebody, and again, I think you have to have a passion for this, to be on that board, because it is special.
I don't disagree. I agree with you 100% in terms of what you said, but I just have a problem getting from there to the point that a term limit on P&amp;Z, a reasonable term limit, is going to somehow preclude that. Because again, the thing that I built into this is you can have anyone essentially remain on P&amp;Z indefinitely if they rotate off and serve as an alternate for a period of time. So quite frankly, we could quite simply rinse and repeat everyone that's on there. And again, the real goal is to get the commissioners to look at who their appointees are, and if they're happy with them, rinse and repeat in your district. By all means, I encourage you to do that, but I think this is something where it's really designed to encourage the commissioners individually to look to see what the options are. The one thing I would go back to, if I may just real briefly, if we're going to look for continuity and conformity to try to have something other than an arbitrary standard with respect to likening this to TDC, the period of time in which one has to remain off of TDC is longer than a single term limit would be for P&amp;Z. So if we're going to match it, I would ask that we match calendar years, eight years on, and then how many, was it two or four years? I just, I think it was two years off, correct?
The issue is, the TDC is controlled by statute, and that's what this document will tell us. This is not controlled by statute. So, you know, we need to compare apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. Some of this is in our control, others isn't, and that, I think, was why we, as a board, decided to task the county manager with getting us all of the different variables before we waded in and decided which way we were going to go. So, you know, I didn't know where we were going. The TDC was, again, a little bit unique, because of statute, this, to my understanding, is not controlled that way. So I don't know if we can compare those, in all fairness.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, being true to form on this since we started, I don't believe in term limits for volunteer boards, so I'll be true to form with that moving forward. Because, you know what, it's, I assign them, I've got complete choice. They have term limits. If they're not doing a good job, I'll just pull them off and either let it sit empty or find somebody else to put on it. As far as this board, I've got, I think Mr. Minibu and Mr. Barcher is my appointment. I have an alternate on there, Mr. Mutter, wonderful guy, talked him into serving as the alternate, and I can't get him to show up to a meeting. So it's just, it's not a very easy board to fulfill, and I So, it's just, it's not a very easy board to fulfill, and I don't have a lot of people knocking down the door to do it. Mr. Barcher just kind of does it, and I'm appreciative of it. But, again, you know, with that, there is a lot of knowledge that you have to get work in these. You know, you did city council like I did. It was three years into it to where I started to develop enough confidence and a little bit of institutional knowledge that I quit driving everybody nuts on the staff. So, I think there's a real advantage to having people know when their jobs and their positions. So, again, on the volunteer, and I'll be quiet after this, I'm probably not going to ever support it with this because I have an ability to term them right out just by replacing them the next year. So, I think somehow we might be even kind of getting into each other's stuff with our own appointments by saying you can't appoint who you think's appropriate to the board. So, that's just my thought on it, but I think I'm outnumbered on this, but I would say so.
Commissioner Lober?
Okay, because my recollection, and I'd ask that either Ms. Bentley or Mr. Abate help me out here, because it's gotten a little bit late. With respect to TDC, if I recall correctly, and help me out, we had eight years on, was it two or four off? I think it may have been four off.
Four.
Four.
I believe it was four.
And I'm happy to mirror that, or if you'd rather have six years on and two years off, or if there's a number that strikes your fancy. Really, it's the spirit of what I'm trying to accomplish that's more important to me than this particular number of years or terms. I mean, would you be amenable to six years on and two years off?
If you want to, sorry, if you want to vote today, I would be willing to do an eight-year term limit. I think that that's what voters have, you know, provided us with. I think that that's the same that we should provide to the individuals that volunteer their time. So, I would be comfortable with voting eight years today. Anything else, I would rather wait to make a determination. So, you know, as you go forward, that's what I'm comfortable with today.
In terms of the amount of time off, though, is it, I guess, is what you're envisioning, having them remain off for that same period of time for four years, as would apply to us and as applies to TDC now? So, eight years on, four years off, or would you rather have less or more? Because my thought is having, you know, kind of gauge the audience here, it doesn't seem that regardless of what we get from Mr. Abate, it's going to change anyone's opinion as to whether or not they support this. So, for that reason, I probably will make the motion tonight. If someone would rather that we wait, I'm happy to wait, but if it's just delaying the inevitable, then I'm not going to wait.
I personally would just like something built in to where, you know, you could address Ms. Pritchett's concern, because if she's got nobody that's interested, you know, is there any latitude for the commission to waive policy or waive, you know, a rule we have in place? Eden?
The reason why I ask is because it took me a bit to find somebody for my second P&amp;Z position. The other guy's been on there a while, but I know when I read a P&amp;Z agenda, you know, I appreciate their input and I learn a little bit, you know, on their, but it's ultimately my decision anyway, so that's how I've always been. We've kind of behaved that way, but...
We could write in a waiver.
Yes, let's do that, because in that way, we don't have to risk the vacancy. I think that may address Commissioner Pritchett's concern.
Would that satisfy her? So, how would you propose that we phrase that? Because I'm flexible with it.
I think as long as she includes it in there.
But in terms of the specific way that we're wording it, I mean, I just want to know what it's going to accomplish, whether we have to bring it back for a vote to get it waived or how we address it. Let's say, for instance, we pass it the way that is being proposed. What happens if our chair can't find a second member for some reason?
Well, for one thing, this is legislative intent, so we could look at it and bring you back some options, because the waiver provisions might be something that we can advertise generally and broadly and come back with specifics. Or you could give us specific direction if you want to be able to bring it to the board and ask for a waiver. That would be very simple to insert.
Okay, I'm happy with that.
That would probably increase transparency if you're worried about somebody that's...
Right, because I'm thinking maybe we just say by majority vote of the board, it can be waived?
Right. That sounds good.
Is that okay? I don't want to make it onerous, we need a supermajority or something crazy like that.
That's good. We step forward with the board anyways, so they can just bring an explanation.
That way, if you've got a list of six people, you know, and then...
And then, obviously, in terms of the duration, I mentioned in the beginning, I'm flexible. I'm happy to change three to eight. In terms of the number of years they have to remain off, though, if we're extending it out to eight years, I don't know that one year is any longer reasonable. I'm not saying it needs to be four, but it seems an awfully short period of time to have them off. Would you contemplate eight and four, eight and two? Because I know you seem to have the most input on this item, that's why I'm looking in your direction.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, my goal with this was to have some level of consistency, and I don't know that if we put a waiver in there, we've really hit the spirit of term limits, right? Term limits unless, you know, unless we come, so I don't think that is a term limit, in all honesty.
But if you're forcing them in the sunshine to put that out there in the public, and then if Commissioner Lober says, "I've got four people that are interested in the board", then you, you're accountable, but that way, because I know I had a hard time finding somebody to fill my second slot on P&amp;Z.
I don't give it as a hack measure.
I'm not saying it's impossible. I could have probably asked around, I guess, or advertised on my Facebook page or whatever, but, you know, I want somebody who actually has a background, so, you know, I don't know. And maybe this is the only, I don't know. I'm just trying to compromise, because that's something we often don't do up here.
Yeah, and again, this is just permission, this is just permission to advertise, so we're not, you know, doing anything, putting anything in stone. So, you know, I think you could advertise term limits on P&amp;Z with a potential waiver, and then we could discuss that in the future. It does not obligate us to do anything other than to advertise and bring it up. So, even though that courtesy many times has not been extended to me, I will certainly extend that courtesy and vote in favor of, should a motion arise, very similar to that.
Is that sufficient specificity for purposes of advertising?
Probably. It would be helpful if we had some concept of how far, how long you wanted them off the board in between.
Three terms? I'm sorry, three years? So, eight years on, three years off, that's less time off than TDC?
Well, TDC has four-year terms, so I don't even know how to compare the two myself.
I don't know it's necessarily the best comparison either, but it was the one that was brought up earlier. So, if there's some desire to have uniformity and consistency, I'm happy to flex in that direction as well. So, if you want two years off, that's fine, three years, two years?
That's probably more reasonable. And then if we need to modify it at the meeting, we can always do that.
Okay, and I'd still keep the language with respect to them being able to serve as alternates during that time. I'm not trying to basically push someone off the board altogether or preclude them from having input. I think that's important, so they have the ability to still chime in at the meetings.
Okay.
So, I'd go ahead and move to advertise this, modifying the three years to eight years, and then changing the time off we said to two years? Two years, so eight years and two years instead of three and one.
And a waiver provision.
And a waiver provision, yes, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lober.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, I'm going to do what I said I wasn't going to do before, but they've been sitting here all darn night, and it's just our stuff. I'm going to allow staff to address item at 10, if that's okay.
Have we downed them all?
It's the concession item. And then we'll go come back, Commissioner Tabia, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
I didn't mean to throw staff for a loop, I just don't want these poor people to sit here any longer.
You've got more cards?
Hmm?
More cards here.
At least the way Mary Ellen's coming up.
J eight was done.
This is a couple vendors at the beach parks that came to the board last meeting to ask for permission for beer and wine sales.
Somebody just gave us a card. Is it that lady?
And so, the board asked us to bring, asked them to come back at the next meeting. So, what the board has is you have the agenda, you have a board report, or a staff report, and the two vendors are here. They're concession ears.
Okay, before I go further, I have comment cards for J eight. We already addressed J eight, so that item won't be coming up again. So, I just don't want somebody to wait. Okay, Commissioner Lober?
With respect to this item, I just wanted to put out there again, I'm trying to defer to the individual commissioners for the items that retain solely to their district. So, my intention, unless something extenuating comes up, is to defer to the D three and D five commissioners as to what they want to do with this.
Commissioner Tabia?
Commission District Three's policy is more beer and wine is a positive, so I will be strongly in favor of this. I'm just wondering why there's no alcohol as well. Liquor, I'm sorry.
I say beer and wine is alcohol, last I checked.
Liquor.
I have two cards. I have Derek Thompson and Anthony Sargent.
Sargent.
Sargent T., I'm sorry. I didn't see the I, it was tiny on here.
Did you see your eye there?
I know, it starts with an I and ends with an I, you can't miss mine. Okay, so do you guys want to come up, talk a little bit about what you're trying to do?
We've been sitting through a lot of muck over here.
I'm sorry.
I'd like a little lecture.
Yeah.
Okay, we're here because...
Maybe five. I'm going to give you a little extra time just for your pain and suffering.
Yeah, I got to wake up.
I really wanted to move you guys, and I really felt bad, but the aquarium wanted to move, the other item wanted to move, and it was, I couldn't say yes to you and no to them, so I'm so sorry.
There was more of them, we're outnumbered.
I didn't move them, so just so you know.
Our problem is, over the last couple of years, it's, our business is on a decline, minus 30% off. I don't know what Derek's is, but I turned in numbers for 36 months, and I think you guys have some kind of chart or something, you could see it. And, you know, I have a payroll, I have a couple of guys that work for me, and they have families, too. And out of 12 months in a year, there's actually six good months for us. The other six months are hit and miss, and the weather plays a lot, you know, we're at the beach. If it's 90 degrees, you're going to have a bad day because it's too hot, they don't want to sit there and eat. If it's below 70, you're going to have a bad day because it's too cold. If it's windy, if it's raining, you know, you got to hit and miss here, you know? And it's harder and harder for me to, you know, pay my rent and to pay my payroll. Over the last three months, I don't think I made, you know, took money home, you know, that I can say I actually made a profit, maybe four or five times. And the hardest thing is to come home and say to my wife, "There's no allowance this week, you know? You got any money saved? Go buy groceries." So, that's what it got to, all right? I've been there almost six years, and in the beginning, it was good, I wasn't having a problem, but I started with a bank of my own money, you know? I had like $50,000 at that, you know, and January, I would just walk into the office and pay them for the whole year in advance, you know? But as things got tougher, now I'm paying month to month, and I'm using a lot of my own money. And frankly, I'm running out of money. So, I know where there's a lot of customers, they come and they want our sandwich because it's the best steak sandwich in the county, and they want to have a cold beer with it, and I can't give it to them. So, I try to sell them soda or water, and they walk away. Sometimes it's four people or six people, you know, three couples, and they walk across the street, they go into Ichabod's or someplace over there, and I lose the business. That's strong for us, you know, to lose that. So, we need help, it's as simple as that. We're at your mercy.
Thanks, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, well, basically, I'm just the exact same.
Can you give me your name?
Oh, sorry, Derek Thompson.
You spell your name like I spell my son's Derek.
Thank you. Basically, I'm in the same situation as Tony. It's only me and my wife and my son that works together, and I've only had the business for 15 months, but from last October, November, and December to this year, I mean, my take is down drastically. And we are the same, people ask, every day we get asked if we sell beer or wine, they just want to sit on the bench, have a beer, enjoy their sandwich.
Okay, I guess, how long is your, how long is your lease, like?
Well, I just got a new lease, and to be honest with you, it might be three years.
See, I would be, I would be in support of something like this, but I think that in order to be fair, I mean, you've got the lease, in order to be fair, after like a year, we would almost have to go out to competitively bid again, correct? Frank? Sorry, Mr. Abate? I mean, that would be the fair option. I want to give them the opportunity.
These leases were, when they were initially let out, they did not include, as you know, beer and wine, because that's the county's, doesn't have a policy to have that at any concession stands currently, outside of the one restaurant and then the two golf courses when we had them. So, one would think that if we're operating like a business when we did the RFP, that either would be in or out, and that hasn't been as a term. So, it would be, of course, the board's discretion if they chose to do that, but that's one option that you might take.
And I really, truly don't believe that you went in saying, "Well, this is, I'm going to wait till I get it, and then I'm just going to go ahead and sneak", and I'm sure you're just trying to, trying to do the right, I mean, trying to do what's going to help you stay above water. I mean, unless the, unless the county has an issue with how we can make this work, is, I mean, do you foresee there being big liabilities or anything like that with this item?
Liability was not one of the cons that we put in the staff report, no.
Yeah. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I think a year and then renegotiate would be fair, too, so that you can get other bids in, because this is definitely changing the contract. You just mentioned something, though, that got my attention, other concession stands. Would this open us up to have to have the same type of thing at ball games and children's sports? Can we write something? I don't know how y'all feel about that, but there might be some concessions that wouldn't be appropriate county-wide. Is this setting the standard, or are we okay, we can just do this standalone?
We had staff check as to what other jurisdictions were doing, and to the best of my knowledge, that none of the surrounding jurisdictions in counties or cities are doing that. So, I, quite honestly, the board, if they made this motion, could do it for just these two, but we're really not in a position to know whether or not any other concessions, whether they be at other parks, et cetera, whether they do it at, you know, ball games or sporting events or other activities, if they would make similar inquiries or not.
We could, we could do a case-by-case approval then, correct?
If I may, there is one jurisdiction that does allow for the sale of beer and wine, that's the city of Titusville, at their marina, as well as us at Pier 220.
Right, but that's an adult hangout. I'm just, but we can make sure that we're not like a children's sports thing to where we're going to have more...
We could take it on a case-by-case basis, for sure.
I feel better with that, then.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I have two thoughts, and I don't want to sound to be like a hard ass, but you bid on this, you've been doing it for however many years, and you just bid on it again a year ago?
I bid on it, I think, maybe three times already.
Okay, so now, now we're...
His contract currently, Mr. Sargent, no, Sargent T. is on a month-to-month, and there is a one-year renewal that is available with Billy's. He has the possibility of a 36-month renewal in April of this year.
So, I guess my point is that when you bid on something, you know what you're bidding on, and if, after you bid on it, you come up with an idea where you could make it better, that's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. And the other concern I have is that, how many, how many vendors do we have on the beaches now?
Currently, we have these two gentlemen, and we just went out and are ready to award a third at the Canova Dog Park. And at one point, there was a concession at Lori Wilson, but we're, Parks and Recreation is no longer running that concession.
Okay, so, that's really not much of a concern. My concern there was if we had, if we had five or six of these out there and we gave these guys retroactively, then they would be coming to us and asking the same, but that's, that's not going to be the case. So, yeah, actually, I'm kind of ambivalent about it.
Commissioner Tabia?
Unfortunately, I think the precedent was set. We had a gentleman come up here and want rent relief because he wasn't making enough money at the courthouse, and that one passed by a vote of four to one. I was the one individual that said, you know, "You sign the contract", and I lost that. But I think the precedent was set for these gentlemen up here, that contracts don't mean much with the county, and if we've provided it to the gentleman not having to pay his rent, I think these gentlemen's, their request is a lot less, actually, than what we've already provided the individual at the courthouse. As a side note, I don't think it's good to serve alcohol at the courthouse.
Commissioner Lober?
Only for DUI case participants. Now, obviously, I understand what your position is, Commissioner Tabia. Now, as far as Madam Chair, where are you with this? Because I think we can just call the question if you're in support of it and get this over and done with.
I'm in support of this. I just wanted to see if you guys would be, you know, agreeable to say, you know, you're on a month-to-month, if you would be agreeable to, like, this is sort of, I don't want to call it a probation period, but agreeable to like a years, a year-long lease to see if, see if this works, and then we can decide, we can always change, we can always, after that year, we can decide if the rent needs to be adjusted.
I don't understand that. I don't understand that. In other words, when I, when I first bid on the park, there was nothing there but a slab. No business, no building, no nothing. So I.
But now you're going to be bidding on somewhere that's allowed to serve alcohol. So that changes the game a little bit. So, I mean, I, I think that we're already, and I'm not saying this that you should be grateful and thankful and all that good stuff. I think we're already granting you a, a little bit of, I don't want to call it favor. I mean, you've been there a while. So it's not like you woke up one day and said, I'm going to stick it to the county. So, but I think we're granting you a little bit of a favor by allowing you to just do it now without asking you for an adjustment in your rent. Because if, if it's busy there, you're going to make money. So.
I already, I already had this discussion with my wife. And it always comes to that. And I'm 100%. At the end of the year, if I'm making money with beer and the business is good, I have no problem with paying more rent.
Yeah, I'm the same.
Agreeable? Is it something we can work with? I don't know what kind of terms or guidance that staff's looking for.
Well, the, the contract that Mr. Sargenti is under, as I, as I mentioned, expire, is a month to month. But he does have a one-year renewal that would expire February 1st of next year.
Okay.
And if you were looking to do a one-year trial period, we would need to amend Billy's contract, Mr. Thompson's contract, because he has a three, 36-month renewal available April of this year.
Are you agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I wouldn't say we even need to amend his contract. If he's month to month and he decides he want, doesn't want to do it anymore, you know, we're not binding, binding him by the year. We, because at the end of, or February 1st, he would be finished unless he renewed for another year, which in that case, the rent terms might be different, correct? I mean, I think we probably need to modify his current agreement.
Yes, we would have to modify both, both agreements to reflect, first of all, beer and wine, any of the insurances and, and so forth. And obviously, any of this would be contingent upon them getting permission from the state to serve beer and wine at these, at these locations. There's zoning. There's, there's a lot of other things that will go into that.
Madam Chair, maybe, and I'm just thinking aloud for a moment here, maybe a way to do it is to move to approve it conditioned upon there not being the option exercised for the year-long lease, so that we don't approve it. And then it's tied in for a period of time, let's say, six months from now, if there's a concern that he's going to say, all right, now I'll make use of the option. And we're not able at that point to reevaluate rent. I think maybe the smart thing to do would be to approve it conditioned upon his not exercising the option that he has to renew until we're in a, in a juncture where we reevaluate what an appropriate rent is. It may be the same. It may be, it may be less. I don't know. I really don't know.
I'm not stingy. I'm the guy.
It's good.
I'm the guy that went in there and paid 12 months in advance. Nobody's ever done that.
And we like you for that.
Yeah. And I've done that for like three years, until things got tough. So I'm not stingy at all.
Is that, is that fair? Because I'd be more comfortable if the motion were phrased that way, conditioned upon his not exercising the year option until the rent is reevaluated.
Go out for an RFP.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, too.
Yeah. Is that understood?
I, Mr. Bate, do you understand?
Well, we will definitely listen to the tape again to make sure we got it right.
No, essentially, what I'm trying to accomplish is, I'd like to give him what he needs as far as some breathing room and oxygen on this. But I don't, and I don't anticipate you would ever do this. But I'm concerned more, more than about either of you, about the precedent this might set for someone else who comes in and may not be as genuine and as good a person as you all are, who might come and say, okay, thank you. And then they turn around and instead of clearly going along with what the intention is by allowing us to reevaluate the rent at the end of a year, instead saying, thank you for doing this. I'm going to make use of this option that's available to us prior to the end of that year, and then locking in for whatever period of time that ox, that that option is, allows for at that lower rent rate or that potentially lower rent rate. That's my only concern. And I don't think you would do that. I really don't get that impression at all.
I don't think staff look right that way. I don't believe staff.
It's even in my mind, just the way you put it there.
It's a good idea, isn't it?
So the contracts did not allow for rent to be increased.
Right.
So if, if Mr. Sargenti were to option his one-year renewal as of February 19 to February 20, and if Mr. Thompson were to agree to not a 36-month renewal, but a one-year renewal, am I understanding that that is something that, that you would like to consider?
That's exactly what I would suggest.
Yes.
That's great.
And then at the end of that year, it would go out to RFP again.
And I would suggest that that does not need to come back to the board because the county manager already has the authority to modify contracts up to $5,000. So the negotiation would happen at this level and not have to come back to the board.
Okay.
But I might also recommend that there are terms and contract terms that would need to be updated because Mr. Thompson's contract was an assignment. And so it's an older contract that doesn't have some of, for example, I believe it doesn't have E-Verify in it, and some of the other, other clauses that the county has since adopted.
Okay. I have a feeling that you guys will work well with them. And obviously, if you have problems, you're going to call our offices. So we'll hear from you if, if you have any grief from the county. But I don't think you will. I think that they know what we want to do. So can I get a motion? Is that okay?
If you include that, it's county manager has the authority to execute the agreement upon approval of the county attorney and risk management.
Yeah, that too.
Then I can take care of everything we've discussed.
Okay.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober to include all those things that, and plus what Frank just said.
Yeah.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to go with the AGO opinion, Madam Chair.
Sure, as long as you don't think it'll go past 11. Because at 11, we have a procedure that we have to vote to continue on the meeting because.
And you're cutting me off at the knees. I'll be very quick.
Okay.
The last regular meeting, I informed the board that I'd be bringing this proposal. This just asked the AGO to issue an opinion on a simple question that reads, quote, "Is it lawful for community redevelopment agencies to expend funds from its redevelopment trust fund on promotional events such as street festivals, whether directly or through a grant to a third party before completion of infrastructure projects included in its redevelopment plan?" As Commissioner Pritchett indicated at the last meeting, it does not hurt to have an outside opinion. If we were to receive such opinion, this would allow the county and its municipal partners to have more information to objectively evaluate expenditures. I'd like to make a motion to direct the county attorney's office to request an opinion from the attorney general's office on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners on the question that was previously read, Madam Chair.
Second for discussion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Pritchett for discussion. And we have Commissioner Lober first with the button.
I was just going to say, I think this is a great idea. I know that there have been some municipalities, unfortunately, one of the larger municipalities in Brevard that recently was rather reticent, and I'm putting it very diplomatically and kindly, at the prospect of getting an AGO. I don't have any problem doing that. I absolutely trust our county attorney. I think we've got the best county attorney, certainly, at least in this county, if not in a wider expanse than that. But that said, it never hurts to have a, an AGO. You know, I can tell you that my, my wife, who works for Scott Ellis' Staff Counsel, has been on board with getting AGOs over her own opinion to determine whether they're appropriate or not. It's, it's not any slight to our county attorney. I can tell you as an attorney, I wouldn't take it as a slight if someone wanted to do that, to get confirmation of what I've said, to have a better basis to argue it if there's some issue that comes up in the future. I think it gives us more ammunition because I do anticipate that what we're going to get back, in all likelihood, is going to be consistent with what we've heard at the county level already. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of it.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, Commissioner Tobias, I, I'm glad we're doing this. And what I did is I called Senator Wright today and Renee, I can't never coach. And I, I think what we also need to do, I asked them if they would start working on something they can do up there so that they can make this more clear. I don't, I don't like them spending money on this. The problem is, there's so many different opinions that it's going to stay so ambiguous. So they said.
Can you hold that thought until my next, uh, my next agenda item?
Oh, but I'm on a roll.
Okay. You're going to repeat that? Because I'm, I.
No, I'm only going to say it one time. But you know, I said it next time, too. But, but I, I think that's where the breakdown is. Because we have so many different opinions, and they're all lawyers. And we can never get the lawyers agreeing with each other. But I think there's so much gray area there that it's confusing. It's just not fair to the individual. Oh, I don't know. I wish they wouldn't do it either. But I think that's got to be.
My pen just slipped.
Sorry, Commissioner Isner, you didn't mean to go so long. But I, I think we just, we just need to get the state level to do something so that we can get it clear with our communities. Because I, I just think we need, we need help with this. But I'm glad we're doing this. And I need, we, I think we need to go a little farther than this after we get done, sir. So I'm done now. So.
And I won't repeat it.
Okay, Commissioner Tobias? Your light's on again.
Sorry, it's just a motion, Madam Chair.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tobias.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lober.
All right, seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you seconded just for discussion.
Oh, it's still second.
But it's still second. I'm sorry, guys.
I'm sorry. It's getting late yet.
It is getting late. My pen's like flying across the room.
We have two seconds.
Okay, second by Commissioner Pritchett, because she was first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Commissioner Pritchett had about the opening I want for this one. And this is something that we can do in the interim when it comes to the Brevard delegation. We brought something up, asking for some sort of clarification in the form of proposed bill that the Brevard delegation, a majority of them, were not in favor of. So with consulting with the chairman, Randy Fine, he suggested that we probably send a letter. And just to be clear before I read this, this is a very cordial, and you're going to find this unique, unsarcastic letter that comes out of my office, because I'd like as many signatures as possible.
Got to hear this.
I'll read it real quickly. "Thank you for your service to the state and the opportunity to provide to discuss a local bill regarding community redevelopment agencies during the delegation meeting on January 15, 2019. We fully respect your decision on this bill and the home rule-based rationale behind it. Currently, there are three pre-charter CRAs to which the county contributes approximately 1.2 billion, sorry, 1.2 million of annual revenue. Unfortunately, two of these CRAs have acted unlawfully, according to the Brevard County Attorney's Office. The county has done its part in attempting to rectify the situation and protect its home rule authority over these funds. First, in August of 2017, we sought out information on how these CRAs are spending county tax dollars. Upon receiving this information, we attempted to enter into negotiations with these CRAs and their governing authority to find common ground. These efforts have failed. Indeed, at least one of these CRAs has taken action directly contrary to our board's reasonable request with no consultation whatsoever. Secondly, or second, a major, a majority of the members of the board then supported the local bill, which you would have, which would have been a small step in the county recovering some of its home rule authority. You determined that this bill was not in the best interest of the state." So here's the, here's the question we're proposing. "Since the delegation has made its clear, its support for home rule, we would appreciate your guidance." And this is the question. "What courts of action do you recommend the county take in order to exercise its most basic home rule authority in having some measure of oversight over its own revenue, particularly when it has been spent in a manner which may be unlawful? Again, thank you for serving the people of Brevard County. We have the utmost respect for the work that you do and would value your input on this important matter. Sincerely." And then the chairwoman in all our names, this would be sent to, to senators and four representatives. That would be the letter, Madam Chair.
So it looks like it's coming from me only.
You, you are the chairperson. This, I think, seeks to answer the very question that Commissioner Pritchett mentioned. What, what can we do? And they may have some good, we, we put forth good effort and, and tried, and maybe they have something we haven't thought of. So that's the intent of this letter, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Well, I think parts of this letter are really good. And I think parts of this letter probably could use a little love, Commissioner Tobias. I just, I, I understand where we're trying to get. I really do. And I'm on board with you that. But I'm not sure. Okay, so you have two attorneys that say it's lawful, two attorneys that say it's not lawful, two attorney generals that say it's lawful. And we might get another attorney general that says it's not lawful. But to throw out there right now that we just assume they've acted unlawfully, I think it's kind of hard on our local municipalities. So I understand the, the goal you're trying to get to. I think there, we could just kind of fix this a little bit so it's, it's not so mean. But maybe we can do this in a way to, to just get the same point across and get their attention to, to address this issue because I think we need to. But I, I think there's a way to do it without a couple of those little sentences in there, sir.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Listen, I, I did not mean, I, I was biting my tongue every second I was writing. Can you tell me what sentences to get rid of? And I am ready to strike them right now if that helps you.
Okay. Unfortunately, too, the CRAs have acted unlawfully. Maybe if we, like.
According to the Brevard County Attorney's Office.
I know, but that's.
It's gone. It's gone.
Okay.
Don't even mention it. It's gone.
Okay. That way, we're not.
You could, I don't want to, I don't want to jump in. But if you want to leave that in, maybe the compromise is, according to the county attorney's office, is these monies may have been.
I am willing to strike it.
Okay.
It's gone. Anything else?
While Commissioner Pritchett's looking, I'll go to Commissioner Lober.
I just want to say, I, I certainly respect the diplomacy that Commissioner Pritchett is, is trying to show with respect to this. I, I do want to call attention, and I didn't bring it up before because it wasn't relevant, and I didn't think that it was going to be productive, that I was asked to attend a prior Melbourne City Council meeting over the CRA issue and over its consideration by the delegation, by one of the, the city council people. And to put it kindly and diplomatically, I was treated pretty reprehensibly there, to the extent that one of the city councilmen actually, on the record during the meeting, apologized to me for the treatment that I received by one, one or more of his colleagues. I get the impression that there's certain individuals that, that are less than appreciative of the relationship that they have with the county commission. And I'm not looking at escalating anything unnecessarily. But I just do want to call out to my colleagues that not everyone is looking at having a productive, good relationship. And occasionally, and I appreciate that you struck it, but I do want to throw out there, occasionally, there may be call for some stronger language than would ordinarily be the case. So I, I don't want to get into it unless someone else wants to, to delve into it. But I did have a lot of concerns based on that interaction.
Mr. Pritchett?
Yeah, I, I think just on those two, there's one more, sir, if you would just put in a manner it should be unlawful. And I do understand that, Mr. Lober, because I tell you what, on every governing board, there's always one good jerk. So I know, I totally get it. But.
So what are you saying?
I feel that.
Not on this board. No, not on this board.
Is that me or?
No, no, sirs. I, I'm getting kind of attached to y'all. But just, just because of the, what it sends out. So I, I think that we still get the same purpose across. But I think we're going to get a little bit better attention to this if, if we just get out where we're insinuating people have acted unlawfully right now, because that's still to be determined.
So to be, to be clear.
There's one more sentence, sir.
Where, yeah, where's that other sentence? I'm sorry.
Okay, it's the second to the last paragraph, sir. How about in a manner which might be questionable?
Or may have been improper.
May have been improper. That's better.
May.
May have been improper.
I love it.
Yeah. Because then you're, we're still, you know, asking a good question. But, you know, you know, in all fairness, I'm not, you know, we've had so many entities that have promoted this as being fair. And it's confused a lot of the cities. And so, you know, in all fairness, I'm not real sure that they've tried to do something that's even contrary. I just think it's so unclear. And it just needs to be stated more clearly.
I couldn't agree with you. So I would, I would change my motion to get rid of the, unfortunately, two of these CRAs have acted unlawfully, according to the Brevard County Attorney's Office, as well as change, be unlawful to.
Maybe questionable.
Have been improper.
What word did you say, Ms.?
Would you rather? Questionable. I'm up for anything.
Questionable or, or we have been improper?
I like questionable better.
Okay, questionable, as it is.
Because it is questionable.
Questionable. Great.
I'd like to also add something to that. If, if, if this is passed unanimously, and I don't hear any other discussion, if it's passed unanimously, I would just like to add that the, the board voted during the meeting. I mean, I trust that your wording won't be, I mean, much more than that, but that the vote, that, that we voted to send this letter. So they understand it's not just coming from my office.
How about it says, "We voted unanimously"?
Where?
They could just say it in a letter.
Anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, we voted unanimously what?
That we voted unanimously to forward this letter.
Right. Exactly. That's exactly what I was saying. I would like you to include that. And that actually shows, shows a stronger message, I think.
Instead of saying the 14-point type, this came from Representative, or Commissioner John Tobias's office and his ex-col, we can put this as the board?
No, in the letter, where it says, you know, you could start out the letter just saying, during regular session on this date and time, you know? Because, right, if, if I got this letter in the mail, I would assume it came from their chairman. But how do I know they even brought it to their board? I think it actually shows. I think it actually shows us unified. It shows it, it sends a bigger message when all five of us are saying, "Look, we have a concern over this."
Okay.
I think you could even throw a paragraph in, where we'd really like for you to bring some type of legislation for it, would bring clarity to this. Section 163, 62, one of the numbers.
Or you don't have to include it, I was just trying to...
I will include anything on here.
That's what I said on the phone today.
Smiley faces, stars, hearts.
I will sign it twice if that makes you happy.
Smiley faces are my thing.
Just real briefly, as we're approaching 11, I'm going to make a motion to extend the meeting up to an additional 20 minutes, provided that staff not be mandated to stay here if they don't wish to be here.
I'll pass the gavel in a second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sounds like we're staying here.
All right. I'm going to pass the gavel, and I'll make a motion, since there wasn't a complete motion made yet, and that we make it with the recommendations from Commissioner Pritchett, as is, and that is all.
Move a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously.
Can you guys tell I'm trying to hurry things along here? Okay. All right, Commissioner Tabia? Item nine?
PowerPoint.
Oh, my gosh. Make it quick.
This will be quick. This is just opening this up for discussion. It's come to my attention that our logo is obsolete for reasons we are probably well aware of. Just as we've had to update our website and television broadcast, it is in our best interest to take proactive stance in modifying something as visible as our logo. Thankfully, this change does not have to cost nearly as much as some of other technology adaptations might. Rather than seeking affirm, as Palm Bay did a few years ago, I think we have more than enough creativity between our staffs to make an attractive and distinctive logo. I've included some suggestions in this agenda packet, but I'm not asking the board to make a selection. In fact, it is my hope that we can solicit input from all our staffs and anyone else who might be interested to submit their suggestions. The board is amiable. I would, Don Walker, to get the word out that we may need to get as much input as possible. Note that the submissions must be ADA compliant and be versatile enough to be used in a variety of ways, whether it be letterhead, websites, or on the side of our utility trucks. Just as we did this last time, we changed our logo. We would not throw out everything with our current logo and order new equipment. Instead, we can update our purchases during normal product cycles throughout attrition. Okay, so let's see some good ones we've got up here, if I can use this PowerPoint thing. How about you just do next? So this is Palm Bay, this is what they spent thousands of dollars doing.
It's worth it.
Next? Okay, there's our logo. Our old logo has changed into this one. Again, there are some issues. In fact, there are some issues with our old logo, historically, that we will be talking about at a different point. Next one, please. Great. There are a whole bunch of logos that are ADA compliant and I think a lot more attractive than what we currently have. And then there are my suggestions, which are these right here, that no, bear no resemblance to the greatest football team that has ever been on the gridiron. Just for everyone's edification, you need to know this. Alabama's colors are not ADA compliant. Neither are FSU's. I'm sorry, Alabama's are, I'm sorry. Miami's colors are not ADA compliant. But Alabama, FSU, UCF are all, if that's the colors that you saw up here. So I would like to open this up as we move forward, to come with something that is going to provide a little more accessibility to our citizens, as well as brighten up our utility trucks. So I'd like to, as we move forward, this to be in people's minds, so we can make some sort of action here in the near future.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Is something wrong with it now as far as legally?
I'm not an attorney, so I cannot answer that question, and, but our logo probably should be ADA compliant.
That's, help me with that, I don't get it. So help me.
Our logo probably should be ADA compliant.
I think he means high contrast.
Oh, contrast.
Higher contrast.
Oh, because, well, I guess we'll have to talk about that, because I love this logo. I mean, it's like got the ocean colors in it, it's got the star for the, like, the launches that are kind of hidden in the air.
I won't say it, but that logo is not ADA compliant.
It's so beautiful.
What makes it not ADA compliant?
The contrast between, the contrast between the colors. So the same way that you know...
Well, if it's on a white pickup truck, that's not, if it's against the...
I don't, I don't set ADA compliance. All I can tell you is the contrast is not ADA compliant.
So you could just change the colors, and it would be ADA compliant?
Absolutely. That is, that could be one suggestion, absolutely. And I agree, if you want to change those colors to orange or blue.
The ones on my shirt are red.
Commissioner Loebur?
Can I ask you to pull up the old Brevard and new Brevard again? I'm sorry, I have a comment in relation to that. Okay, so, help me out here, because I, my understanding, and I could have been operating under the wrong impression this whole time, I didn't believe that the item here listed as old logo was the old logo. I thought that was our seal, and separate and apart from that, what's listed as new logo was simply our logo. And I know that Jeff McKnight and I worked on obtaining some high resolution or vector graphics, and I know that some of them, at least in the file names, indicated that the item labeled "old logo" was, in fact, the seal, and we may still have it as the current seal, whereas the new logo was simply the logo. So I just have some confusion as to that, because I know, at least with my business cards, and the business cards I have for my staff, we opted to use the seal instead of the new logo, just because we didn't like the new logo.
My understanding is they were one and the same at one time, at which time they branched, they branched off. So that's when they became separate, we enter into the second one. But again...
You're on my trivia team.
There are some, well, it gets worse here. Let's go to the old logo, since it's 11:05 at night. The wrong date is on the logo. So our seal has the incorrect date, thank you, Brevard Historical Commission. This may be one of the, one of the commissions we need to get rid of. We didn't become a county until 1855. 1854 is incorrect up there, which is kind of embarrassing, but nonetheless, something we probably need to take care of here sometime in the future.
Thank you.
That's fantastic.
John Denningoff knew that, I'm sure.
I'm like punch drunk, I think.
Is there a motion?
To change the date on the logo?
No.
Madam Chair, I'm not asking for any type of motion. I just would like to get in ADA compliance here and solicit any type of suggestions. I've thrown some out there. If it's as simple as Commissioner Pritchett's idea of changing the colors, if you like the logo, then absolutely, I would, I didn't think that way, and I think that would, you know, certainly be worthy of discussion as we move forward. As long as we're in ADA compliance, I think that would be a good thing.
Awesome. Public comments? Anybody that was here for the lagoon that wants to speak? And I have Mr. Tovey. So you can come up, Mr. Tovey? I didn't miss anything, right? Three. You said 11:20.
Charles Tovey, 2555, Roberts Road, Melbourne. Burning Desire. $40 million. You don't think they could invent a toilet to process and neutralize everything? And the way it is now, they're almost that way. So we're gearing all this money to something that might be obsolete in the future. So all the money is invested, and all this time, and all the people waiting to speak, and the whole thing changes. Burning Desires. What's the biggest positive thing that could change the lagoon? Clean water, right? Spring clean water. And tomorrow, I talked to one of your Brevard County employees, and they're going to help me with finding a map so I can write down my information and disclose it before you make any major decisions. I have some help for the lagoon, which is not cost involving, and the other thing was is that I'll buy the muck. I turn it into money. And we're spending all this money to remove it, when maybe have we tried soliciting somebody to buy it and do something? No, we have $40 million. That's five districts, 12 million per district. That's a lot of money for a little section, let's see, 12 miles per, yeah, a million a mile each zone. And we can't find any solution, but we're spending all this money to remedy situations. I'm sorry, I had the burning desire. I just wanted to make sure that I have the information turned in to you, and that you don't make any hasty decisions on the long term of things when it might be changed considerably. And the way technology is now, I don't think that we should be, personally, I don't think we should stick all that money into something that could be changing radically. And if anybody had some kind of monetary, if they were lucrative, thought worthy of being lucrative, they'd find a way to, $40 million, and we can't find a way, I don't want to keep you longer. And I have a whole bunch of stuff that I didn't talk about. Still got 22 seconds. I'm looking. 15 seconds. Well, the algae bloom, I do have a remedy or a help for that, and I have help for all those things, and we could turn it into money instead of spending money and save people lots of... Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. He's not here. Does anybody else want to speak? Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, evening, Commissioners. Robert Burns, 5829 Dusky Wing Drive here in Vieira. I was coming to speak on the aquarium issue, but it's moot. The only reason I'm speaking now is about the logo. If you are going to open that up for possible redesign, I would encourage you to, and you're concerned about costs of that process, I would encourage you to open it up to our schools. There are a lot of talent in our schools, to allow some of the people in those art programs opportunity to contribute to that, and put out the guidelines to ensure that they're ADA compliant, that's all.
Thank you. What were your thoughts on the aquarium, just out of curiosity?
Almost verbatim what you stated, Commissioner Snarty. I left my phone...
I didn't know that. Now, I swear to God, I didn't.
I think the only other point that...
I know who you are, but I don't really know you.
Right.
You know what I mean? It wasn't planned.
The only other point that I would have made, I think that when the city passed, or the county passes something, that's the county giving its word to the people. I feel like if we're rescinding that, then we're going back on our word. That would have been the only other point that I made.
Yeah. Thank you. Awesome. And anybody else? All right, board reports, Mr. Vate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Loebur?
This will probably take me about 15 minutes, but I'll condense it to 10. No, I don't have a report this evening, I'm done.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did a couple shadowings. I would like to dug divers at the National Resources, Natural Resources Department, was out checking gas tanks. It's amazing, the care that our staff has, not only for the business owners, but the environment as well. That's a thin line to walk, and he certainly did a very good job. Also, our utility services folks, I went to the South Central Wastewater Treatment Plant. There, I met with Edward Fontanen and Phil Bassett, who, again, were very skilled, very kind, and during the very few places that were a little pungent, scooted us through in a very expeditious fashion. So we've got some great workers on the ground, and we are very fortunate to have those folks working very hard for the people of Brevard County. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes, I'm seeking board approval for me to join the EDC on their trip to DC in March.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett.
Is this, just for point of information, is this just to authorize you to go, or is there... I'll second it, then.
Second by Commissioner Loebur. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anything else? I take that as a no. And I have nothing. With that meeting adjourned. Thanks, staff.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.